Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees special meeting for Tuesday, May 15, 2018 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee George Havitz.
Here.
Clerk Corvett here. Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Kermey.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
Everyone's present. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by our planner, Laura Haw.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Laura. Tonight we have the honor of recognizing some of the key employees that serve the Plymouth Township community. The month of May is like the ultimate commemorative month for police, fire, EMS, and DPW personnel. If you recall, last week, we recognized our firefighters, and tonight, we're going to have similar tributes in honor of our public works employees, our EMTs, our emergency medical technicians, and our police. So let's start with the DPW, and this is National Public Works Week. Come on up. You too, Patrick. This is National Public Works Week. The health, safety, and comfort of the community greatly depend upon the service provided by our public works employees. Through their effort and skill, they ensure the efficient operation of systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. Dan, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Emergency Medical Services Week. EMTs and paramedics serve as the backbone of pre-hospital care, often on scene, with police officers and firefighters to assist people in scary, distressing situations to provide critical medical care when it's needed most. Gentlemen? And finally, this is National Police Week through May 13 through the 19th. Police officers take an oath to serve their community by safeguarding life and property and protecting the citizens against violence and disorder. They work around the clock to maintain safety and order so the rest of us can live our lives in peace. In addition to that, today, I was very honored to be part of the Wayne County First Responders' Memorial Service right here in Plymouth Township at Hagerty and Heinz Drive is the Wayne County First Responders' Memorial. So myself and trustee Jack Dempsey were able to attend and really participated in a very moving and poignant ceremony. We actually had some of the families of the victims of the police officers who have been recently lost in the line of duty. It's a very emotional and very, very moving ceremony. So in honor of all of our gratitude and thanks to our police officers here in Plymouth Township, we'd like to present Lieutenant Brothers and Lieutenant Kudra with the proclamation for National Police Week. All right. Congratulations. Next up is Item C, Approval of the Agenda. Comments or questions?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for approval of the agenda for Tuesday, May 15, 2018.
Motion's made by Clerk Corvett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up is Item D. This is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. That's all we've got today on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting Tuesday, May 8, 2018.
Thank you. Motion's made by Clerk Corvett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is Public Comments and Questions. This will not be your only opportunity during the meeting for public comments and questions. We will have a similar segment at the end of the meeting, and we also encourage questions on every agenda item as long as it's pertinent to that particular item that is before us. So are there any public comments or questions right now on any issue? If you think of something, we'll still have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. So let's move on to Item F1. This is the review of the Verona Park Cluster Housing Option Proposal, and our planning consultant, Laura Haw. Good evening.
Evening, trustees. The application before you. Okay. The application. Can I have my hand raised? No. Okay. The application before you, 2279, is a request for a cluster housing option. Cluster housing is a development option where there's an increase in density for the developer by clustering the units into a smaller space. But by doing this development option, it also results in a larger benefit to the township, the Plymouth community. And typically, it's used so that some natural features on the site can be preserved, where they might not be if it was a traditional lot split and development of those parcels. So I want to be clear that the cluster housing option is not a site plan. It's a concept plan. It provides the general road network layout. It prescribes the number of units that are acceptable. It illustrates key amenities, and it also shows that the site has the potential to provide and meet Wayne County's requirements for stormwater management. So it's not a full site plan. I'll get into the history of the project in a little bit, but this cluster housing option is before you tonight because the Planning Commission first reviews it, and then they make a recommendation to the board. The board has the ultimate authority to approve or deny the option. So the subject parcel is approximately five acres. It's mostly wooded, and it's west of Beck and north of Edinburgh Drive. There have been several development options discussed on this site for years and years, and for different reasons, these developments were never carried through. So it's an undeveloped lot. The applicant tonight, Mr. Jack Carnahan, is proposing a cluster housing option for 14 detached residential units. And I believe the site plan is in your packet as well, or the concept plan, excuse me. The site, which was recently rezoned last year in 2017, is the R1S district, and this concept was previously filed under the name Edinburgh State, so that might ring a bell. And by using the cluster housing option for this parcel, this five-acre parcel, the zoning ordinance permits a maximum of 15 units. That's not to say that 15 units is a given number of units for the site. That's just the prescribed density. As part of the cluster housing option, the site needs to meet the requirements of Article 22 of the zoning ordinance, and there's five eligibility principles that are listed in that article. And you'll see in the planner's report that's provided in your board packet, it lists those five principles and whether or not the site can meet that, because the site development might not be able to meet those five principles at 15 units. This, all this information that was included in your board packet was presented to the Planning Commission at their March 21 meeting, where a public hearing was also held that night, and two members of the public addressed the commission at that meeting. Both the planners and the engineers report at the March meeting recommended that the project be postponed, namely because of the density and the lack of amenities that were offered. The Planning Commission then did postpone the application to grant the developers some additional time to revise the plans. They did so and presented a revised concept to the Planning Commission at their meeting the following month, April 18. That same plan that the applicant revised and presented on April 18 is what is included in your packet and presented this evening, and that is the 14 single-family detached units. The Planning Commission was still a bit concerned at their last meeting about the quality of the site amenities, but they were comfortable to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, given that the applicant did decrease the proposed units by one. They went from 15 to 14. And they attached a condition of approval to sort of iron out those amenities in greater detail during the site plan review process. So the next step in this process is for the board tonight to offer consideration on the project, and there are several options available. The first is denial. The second is to resum it to the Planning Commission for further consideration. The third would be to postpone and provide direction to the applicant on perhaps some revisions. The fourth would be to approve with conditions that you see fit, including a prescribed number of units. And the fourth, or the fifth, would be to approve with that condition that the Planning Commission has already attached. So I know that's a lot of options. The applicant is here this evening to discuss the project with you, and if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions?
Tell me about the amenities that the Planning Commission is attempting to get put in here.
Okay. So at the March meeting, the first meeting, the site amenity that the applicant proposed was the stormwater detention. If you'd like to pull up the plan, it can help illustrate that. There's a fore bay and then the actual detention pond, and that was proposed as the amenity. The Planning Commission said, "This isn't appropriate. We need to see some actual type of amenity for those who live in this neighborhood." What the applicant has proposed is, I believe, it's just west of the detention pond, between units two and three there, there's about a 500-foot path that leads up where the applicant is proposing a pergola that overlooks the detention pond, and I believe two seats. That is what they are proposing.
Do you anticipate interior sidewalks, and is this a gated community?
A gate has not been proposed at this time. The, I'm not sure how the Planning Commission would feel about that just because of stacking onto the back. I know that that has been a concern for them before, but that was not discussed. In terms of a sidewalk, it was recommended in my report that at least a sidewalk be provided on one side of the street. My biggest concern for this project is that there's nowhere to really go if you live in this development. You'll see with the next cluster housing option that we'll be taking a look at tonight for consideration, that they're providing a walking path, and that's something that the township has seen in many of its residential developments, is some sort of amenity for those who live in it.
So you're saying your concern is it's not connected to any other development or piece of property?
Correct. It feels isolated to me.
But what other choices do you have?
Well, the recommendation that was presented to the Planning Commission was to offer a meandering path that could go through and provide individuals who live there with some sort of place to walk their dog or take their grandkids.
That becomes a marketing thing. Maybe people don't want their neighbors wandering and quote their backyard even though they don't own that backyard. It's common property.
That's, that's true.
So you need to be careful about amenities that detract from and over-regulating, detract from marketability or livability. So I urge you to be careful about how much pressure the Planning Commission puts to create an amenity, which is a little bit vague. So just encourage you, sidewalks are a great thing. How many houses, if you did this on a platted subdivision? How many?
It's likely that if this were divided under the R1S zoning, you could either have nine or 10.
Pardon?
Nine or 10 lots, depending on the internal road network. That would require likely that you would have to have three or four lots with direct access off of Edinburgh Drive, which is one, is probably the most important concern that we heard from the adjacent homeowners, is that they did not want access to come off of Edinburgh Drive.
Usually, we would calculate that number would be, is it in here, that number under alternative development? That's usually part of the decision of...
Yeah, I believe we talked about that during the rezoning process last year. I think it's 10.
I have a question for Bob as our rep to the Planning Commission. What kind of feedback did you hear in these deliberations relating to the number of homes that would be acceptable, not only from the consultant's perspective, but the neighbors and maybe even the developers? I mean, is this, is this a reasonable number, or what do you think?
I think it is. This went through, what, three different iterations? I mean, there were multiple iterations. At one point, I think there was a proposal to have, like, townhouse.
Attached.
Yeah, attached. And so the neighbors were, you know, were quite engaged, and I, as far as my understanding from the Planning Commission is, this was a nice compromise solution that took the neighbors into consider, neighbors' concerns into consideration.
Was there a lot of feedback at these meetings from the neighbors? Did they show up? Did they voice complaint, concern, or anything that you recall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, probably not any more than what you might ordinarily see. It was, it's an active, you know, it's a pretty active HOA.
Wasn't the initial concern about this, that the road, the access road would be off of Edinburgh?
That was a major concern. Another...
And the county, do they have any issues with this road off of Beck? Beck's a busy road.
I believe the applicant could speak more to that, but they did work with Wayne County on getting that access off of Beck Road. It lines up with Gulfview Lane to the east, and they did a traffic study in support of that.
Okay.
One of the...
I think, I think also to add to that, it's probably important to understand the target market for these homes. So these are targeted at empty nesters, so you're not going to have, you know, five, six-person families living in them. You might have one or two people, three at most.
They're targeted for us, right?
Pardon me?
They're targeted for us.
I wish I could afford one.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Would the developers like to comment at all?
I'm Jack Carnahan. I've been involved with this for the last couple of years. If you may recall, in December, when this was rezoned, we proposed 15 detached homes, and one of the major items was that we would put the road off of Beck, the access. We would also do our best to have no impact, to have as little impact as possible along Edinburgh, and that's why we're proposing the layout that you see. We've done literally the exact same thing we said we would do. And I know there was discussion at the time, you can't give a rezoning to a specific plan, but we've done everything we said we would do. We don't see the need, especially for a sidewalk, to loop through here and be in somebody's backyard. People that we're aiming for are not going to want to see somebody walking through their backyard. There'll be door walls at the back, near the decks, and any size dog, big or little, will see somebody there, and then you've got to deal with that aggravation as well. We've got to sell these, so that's a real consideration. We've also worked closely with the Heather Hills Homeowners Association to make sure they were comfortable with what we were doing, and we've shown them at all stages, and we're proposing, as we do develop, if there's not an adequate amount of vegetation that remains to block Edinburgh as you drive through there into our project, we're going to beef that up. We have a preliminary landscape plan that indicates just that. We're also working on a tree survey. We have a tree survey from several years ago, and I cannot find the firm that did that. They're no longer in business, so I contracted with another firm to do a new tree survey. The trees have been located, but they've not been identified yet. They've all been tagged and located, so I will have that, and we've indicated to the Planning Commission, we'll be working with them to show just how many are coming out, just how much replacement is being done. We've also, on our preliminary landscape plan, shown a great deal of improvement along Beck Road as far as landscaping and a real nice entry feature with walls. We have not proposed that to be a gated street. We think with this, I'll call it an enclave of 14 units designed for empty nesters, this is a really nice plan, and that people will be very happy with it.
And I would add to that, that Mr. Carnahan was also very, very good to work with the Planning Commission. He took, in my view, he took, he took all of the neighbors' concerns into consideration, and he came back with plans that would work. So he was, sometimes you see, you know, inflexibility on behalf of the developer, and we didn't see that at all.
What is your 90 percent probability start date?
That depends on Wayne County and their approval for the detention system and the work in Beck Road. I've asked the, if, once we're successful in getting this cluster housing option approval, I will have the engineers finish all the work for the detention system and for the work within Beck Road right away, so we can get that submitted as soon as possible. We're still trying to get this thing started around August. It'll depend mainly on how fast Wayne County responds. They've indicated they'll work with us, because they've worked with us before, and we had several approvals. They're very happy that we are now lining up our street and going to Beck Road, and we're widening that, we're going to widen that out enough to provide a full turn lane to, northbound to turn left into our sub, and still have traffic be able to flow.
So it's a recurring theme, that the county oftentimes is the critical path to economic development.
Yes, sir, they are.
To say it diplomatically.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Gary? No? Anybody in the public? I saw somebody had their hand up. You still interested?
I'd like to come up.
You've got to come up, though, because our, we're, we're live on TV, so we've got to have people come forward, give your name and address, and speak into the microphone.
My name is Bruce Barton, and I live in the subdivision. I don't live off of Edinburgh, but I live off of Loch Ness Court, which is one of the courts down the road. I just, I actually just had a question for you, well, a couple of questions. My main concern is the discussion about the walkway. Has that yes, or has that no been decided, or are we in the middle of trying to decide on that, or what?
We don't decide.
Or am I asking the right people?
The Township Board does not decide that.
Okay.
That is the planning director and the Planning Commission.
Okay, so this is a proposal by the Planning Commission. Is that right?
Laura, tell us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The walking path.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, the walking path.
The proposal is by the applicant, and as part of the request for the cluster housing option in order to get this many units, one of those requirements is to provide some sort of green, open space amenity for the residents that will be living there. So that doesn't necessarily have to take the form of a walking path. That could take the form of an open green space, of a little pocket park within the neighborhood, some sort of feature that is available to those living there. And that has been proposed thus far, as, as you see on the site plan there, that yellow highlight. There's that 500-foot path.
Okay. It's not a, it's not a circular path. It's a direct route north.
It's a dead-end path.
Bruce, does your house butt up against that or something?
No.
No?
But I've talked to several people that, where their house is across the street from that on Edinburgh, and they're concerned that a walking path around is going to take out some of that greenery up there. Nobody knows exactly how it's going to end up, and I think the builders already made a comment for that effect. So that's, that's the concern. And also others that, you know, we don't want people in the garden that's expressed here. We don't want people walking in our backyard if it was me and mine that are probably... Chuck made some comments about that. So that was all I wanted to say.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, so Laura? Yep.
Fred Portelli, I live in Heather Hills also. This is supposed to be a walking community. There's no sidewalks in this project here. It's supposed to be marketed to empty nesters, senior citizens. Mailboxes at Beck Road entrance. What's going to happen in the wintertime, when the streets are icy or not plowed, how are they going to get over there to their mailbox? You know, this, this project went from a five to a six single-family unit to 16 units in a four-building complex, which was reduced down to a 16-unit, single, cluster complex. Next, it went down to 15 single-unit cluster complexes. It's less than the five acres, and from what I understand, the density does not support that. There's supposed to be, what, nine or 10 units for this density? So why are we approving 14 units someplace where there's no place for the residents to walk within the unit? You know, that just doesn't make any sense for a walking community.
So let's clarify. We are possibly having interior sidewalk on one side of the road. That will be worked out. Your idea about the mailboxes, I think, is great. We need to move them in, because you're going to have stacking on Beck Road where people are going to be trying to pick up their mail, because they don't want to get out of their vehicle.
I agree.
So that's a good point. But the land has to be developed. Private property rights are an important thing in our country, so they have to, we have to allow them to develop it within the ordinance.
Yeah, but we...
And this is within the ordinance.
We should protect the density rights of the citizens who live in this area here. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the audience? All right, so Laura, your, your recommendation tonight would be to approve the application contingent on the Planning Commission's conditions. So our decision tonight would, would... So our decision tonight would, would send this back to the Planning Commission. Tell us, tell us how that works.
Well, in a way, it would, yes. The cluster, if, if this were approved tonight, then the cluster housing option would be finalized. And then, at that point, the developer would have the ability to apply for an official site plan for the site. They would work that out with the Planning Commission, and then it would come back to the board one final time with all the legal documents for review.
Okay.
But I'd like to clarify that the Planning, Planning Commission's recommendation is to consider this for approval, and that comes with the caveat that the Township Board is comfortable with the amount of units that are proposed, that this project can meet those cluster housing eligibility principles as designed.
Did you say that after we approve, if we approve this tonight, it's going to come back again?
It will. Because it's the cluster housing option, they'll have to do the, the master deed and all the legal documents that run with the land. Having Bennett, the Township Attorney, would review that and present that, as well as the final site plan for your exploration.
So we're, we're approving the cluster option-
Right.
-but not the site plan?
Correct.
Okay. That almost sounded like a motion.
Sure. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve application 2279-0218, contingent on the Planning Commission's conditions.
Is that sufficient in terms of a motion? Does that give you enough direction?
That's appropriate.
Okay. There's a motion made by Trustee Dorchevitz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heising?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Next up is item F2. This is a review of the ponds at Andover, cluster housing option, again with Laura Haw.
Thank you. I won't go through the, the whole spiel because this is just similar to the last application. It's a cluster housing option, so this is the concept phase of the process. This site is a bit larger. It's approximately 11 acres, and it's north of North Territorial and west of Ridge. It is the R1S Single Family Residential District, and it contains approximately, three-fourths of the land is covered by water, which is where the name, the ponds at Andover, is originating from. The applicant is proposing to develop the property into seven single-family detached homes. They're all custom-designed and sized between 2,000 and 2,500 square feet with many first-floor master suites. This project has been going on for over a year now with several iterations to the plan. The applicant has revised the plan to, to, you know, put a good faith effort towards the Planning Commission's considerations and has been pleasurable to work with in that respect. The Planning Commission's recommendation is for approval, just contingent on some of the outstanding items in both the planner and engineer's report. I'd like to note that this developer has reduced the number of units by one from their original concept. Eight were proposed, seven are here shown today, and they've also really expanded their amenities. They're preserving a large portion of the site as green wooded open space. They're doing infill vegetation, and they have a nice loop. You know, this is a similar development where the development is slightly isolated just because of the water bodies around it, and this path will allow, you know, kids and families to take a walk around the water's edge, and they still have the backyards.
Bob, there's a, further down, towards the end of the package on this, there's, we don't have as nice a drawing as we did for the last one, but there is a sketch of the, a very sketch of a site plan with the lake and, that's about it, right?
I think there's one, one more a little further.
One more, yeah. That one's a little busy.
Laura, while we're looking, why is this a cluster housing option with 11 acres and only seven sites?
One more, one more.
Simply because over 70 percent of the site is underwater, is, you know, covered by water. So as part of the cluster housing option, you're allowed to count a percentage of that water in your density bonus, and that's what they've done here.
Bob, if you can just go, one more slide. There's a, there's one that, ah, that's the one, yeah. Oh, no, it's not. I have one that's got the outlines of the homes, right there. So that shows the 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, seven homes?
Seven homes, yeah.
Correct.
And then the pond is to that, that's all that, the pond.
And then to the east, behind units 2 and 3, that's also water on the adjacent property.
Yeah.
And the parcel does extend north quite a bit. It's just not shown in this drawing because it's all a water body.
Parcel goes all the way up.
I think the parcel goes all the way up. The, the, is the pond completely enclosed? Does the parcel surround the pond?
I don't recall.
It does not.
That pond looks like it's got a lot of algae on it at the, at the north.
What is the subdivision to the north?
That's the-
Trailer park.
Yeah. Trailer park, and then there's that other community that's right there.
There's condos there and then houses.
Condos on a very narrow street, right at the top of the screen. That's where you have a lot of, there's a big cluster, series of cluster homes.
Right there.
Right there. Up, a little bit more.
Right there.
Nope, up, one more.
Up or down?
Up.
Up, one more.
Move your cursor up.
Right there.
Stop, no, down, there. Ah, that one.
This is North Territorial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
We've walked that before.
I'm still a little confused on the density question because those, that drawing looks like those are big lots. If we didn't grant the cluster housing option, how many homes could they put on this amount of land?
Probably-
Two.
Two or three.
Really?
Depending on how they split it.
This is a very challenging site.
Yes.
And those lots are really the typical site condo lots, right? Which really are major, traditionally with site condo, you have an extremely large lot, and it's not really part of the homeowner's property, correct? The site condo?
There would be more open space.
Yeah, it's common.
Laura, the, the outstanding items that we've recognized and, like, the sidewalk along Territorial be relocated.
Yes.
I was concerned about the proposed sidewalk loop behind lots 4 and 6 and pulling them inward. Will inward be closer to the houses in lots 4 and 6 then?
Just slightly. Right now, it's just a foot or two off the wetland, so we're just recommending a few feet more. At the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant and, I believe, the engineer were present, and he agreed with that recommendation. It would be better for the wetland.
And then these outstanding items will all be addressed by the Planning Commission once this option is approved.
Yes, and they are minor. The applicant has done a great job addressing all the others in previous meetings.
Ms. Haw, I noticed that Trustee Kermy brought up the fact that this is a challenging site, I believe it is. I've sold houses in the, that area, just, just east of it, and I know that developer years ago had some issues, you know, with basements and whatnot. Have they done good boring samples there? Are they going to require any kind of special foundation work that anyone knows about there? I'd hate to have, you know, people have basement problems there.
I believe the applicant has gone through that process. Bruce Michael is here, if you'd like to speak to that, or Dave Richmond, if there's any information that's been provided to you so far. No?
This one, not that one, okay. Bruce Michael, representing Trowbridge. We've done some test pits out there. We've got kind of a sandy spit that is the kind of peninsula that's the developed portion of the property, so we don't have any bad soils in this particular area. We're kind of on the ridge before you get down to the stuff that's kind of nasty down by the lake or pond. So we're comfortable that we don't have any hidden issues. You have a lot of woods on there, too, and if you had, you know, soils that were not geotechnically stable, you wouldn't be able to hold the trees up.
So how far away will you be from the pond where the, where the actual footprint of the house is, you know?
The closest house is probably about 40 feet, the back of the closest house. I think we've, you know, the Google Earth map, I'm looking at my handheld here, and the Google Earth map, I just want to remind folks that there's a lot of stuff there that's algae and whatnot, just to let you know. It looks like grass, but it's not. It's algae. You have to pan down a little.
Laura, is that a man-made pond, the one with the algae on top?
Yeah, that, that's all.
I'm, I'm not sure.
This was, this was a stream through here that got impounded a lot of years ago, is what's happened. I think there are some freshwater springs on the bottom of it, and the edge is fairly well-defined, at least on our, our site. You can see where it had been. It doesn't just taper off, it goes down fairly quickly.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public on this one? Okay.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move to approve application 2237-30317, contingent on the Planning Commission's conditions that the site plan process will address the outstanding items as listed in the cluster housing option planners and engineers report.
Thank you. Motion made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Supervisor Heising?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up is item F3, fireworks permit request from the Western Wayne County Conservation Association. Chief Phillips.
Good evening, everyone. A little background, the Western Wayne County Conservation Association has operated in the charter township of Plymouth for 80 years. That's 80 years. I had to, I had to re-ask because I, I didn't believe it myself. They are holding a private firework display for their members to celebrate their 80th anniversary. Under the Township Fireworks Ordinance, Section E, and I'm paraphrasing, the Township Board, upon application and writing, may grant a permit for the use of fireworks otherwise prohibited. They have provided their application. They have provided a, a di, not a diagram, but a, a inventory of what they will be doing. They have provided a certificate, certificate of liability insurance, and I have also provided their previous permit when they conducted their 70th anniversary 10 years ago, and a copy of the ordinance. There is a member from the Western Wayne Conservation Association here to answer any questions, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Members only invited?
Any other questions from the public or the board? Okay, I like a motion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman?
I move to grant a fireworks permit to the Western Wayne Conservation Association to conduct the fireworks display listed in the attached application dated May 8, 2018, to be held on July 28, 2018, or their designated rain date.
Okay, thank you. Motion's made by-
Second.
-Trustee Heitman, seconded by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Supervisor Heising?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Next up is item F4. This is the creation of the Finance Director position. We are asking, Clerk Vorba and I are asking the Township Board to create the position of Township Finance Director at a starting salary of $90,000, retroactive to January 1, and appoint Cynthia Kushner to the position. Ms. Kushner is currently serving as our accountant, that's her title, and her, that position will be left vacant. Funding for this change will come, I originally said via a budget amendment, and I believe that is still the case, although I think that there is sufficient funds already in the clerk's budget for this, but we, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather have more than less and then not have to come back again for another adjustment to this. Any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
This is really more of a reclassification of position. It's more a new title than a new role. This is a role that Ms. Kushner has been fulfilling in its entirety as a finance director since we've been here. She has, as I have indicated before, in the year 2017, worked 16 months' worth of time in a 12-month period in order to fulfill the obligations that the township has, both statutorily, to get the budget done on time, to get the audit done on time, and she has done that full force and has been very dedicated in doing that. She has, of course, met with all the department heads and assisting them putting together the budget, their budgets, which they had never done before. And so we have divided up the work between the treasurer and the, and the clerk's office, which houses the county department, to meet statutory requirements, and I want to thank the treasurer for his assistance, his assistant, in helping us do that so that we're statutorily sound when it comes to accountability and checks and balances as required by state law. And so Ms. Kushner has worked steadfast in doing that without compensation, I might add, all that period. And so 16 months' worth of work in '17, she's already put in two months' additional work in this, in this year. She's been in this position since '15. She's also a 25-year resident of, of the township, and I think it's very nice when you have people who see their civic duties and step forward and do it. So I passed out a little sheet here showing what the surrounding areas for this position is paying. Quite frankly, my opinion, we're still not paying her enough. And so this is about a $66, $6700 increase and a new title, which I think she deserves to have. And if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to, to assist you with.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments?
Sure, I'll make a few. First and foremost is that it's not about the position, it's about the role, or not about the person, it's about the, about the role. None of that staff work that you just articulated has been presented to us. I don't know what the roles and responsibilities are. In addition to that, if she, and again, I am not a fan of doing public performance appraisals. We have a lot of non-rep employees, and if we're going to do public performance appraisals, I think we should also consider the deputy treasurer, and we should, should consider other roles that are non-rep. So that being said, I don't see how promoting an individual in this position who is working a lot of hours would suddenly not work a lot of hours, meaning that you'd have to backfill the accounting position, which means it creates another position, and this is a $2.5 million decision being done at a special meeting. So they don't magically have less hours to work.
Okay. Just a couple of questions, just a couple of comments. One, this is a special meeting. This is not a special meeting for this purpose. This is a special meeting because, as I told you weeks ago, the month of May is a very busy month, and we have a lot of items on our plate that we have to address. So it was prudent for me to call a special meeting tonight to take up some of the extra things that we have to work on in the month of May. Our last meeting, I believe, went for three and a half hours. I think our meeting next week would, may, may go for just as long. So this is a way to alleviate some of the agenda burden off of us. With respect to the accountant position that exists where Cynthia is right now, I have made it clear that there is no intention to fill that position. We don't have the funding for it. We did not plan to, to create that position. As Mr. Vorba pointed out, this- As Mr. Vorba pointed out, this really is more of an acknowledgement of the hard work that she does every day. It will give her an increase in pay, and it will give her a title that I believe she deserves. All of our comparable communities around us have finance directors. When she attends meetings of the court or water issues or meeting with our auditors, you don't walk into those meetings as an accountant. You have to have some, you have to have some gravitas, thank you, Jerry, behind you. And I think this is, I think this shows the important work that she does. It reflects the important work that she does, and I think it's in keeping with many of our comparable communities. Again, there is no plan to backfill this position. There's nobody waiting in the wings to take her spot. I believe that Cynthia will continue her extraordinary work above and beyond the call of duty to help our township, and she does that because she really does love the job. She loves our community, and she sees this as, I think, not only her job but as a civic duty, and I...
And again, I want to separate that from the individual because I do not like doing public performance appraisals, but there's no staff work done. There's no FTE analysis done on this. It was, it's, you didn't do the homework.
Okay.
But, you know...
We did staff work.
Yeah, where's the staff work?
Where's the organization chart? Usually...
But setting that aside to that point, then you should eliminate the accounting position off the org chart, and if there was ever going to be a backfill, that would have to come back to the board to create a new position. Otherwise, it's a position that's open.
Well, it's not, so, and I can certainly take a look at the org chart, so, anyway.
Usually, the finance director reports to the chief financial officer, which is the supervisor, does not report to a treasurer.
Clerk?
Clerk, excuse me. We need to delay this for the budget time which is coming up. The other thing is retro pay. Did you check? It's usually, it's usually not legal to do that in a public entity, but maybe you've checked that out. You can't do retro pay normally.
We do it with...
It's highly unusual, and I think it's precedent-setting in a negative way. My judgment is, and we didn't study, we didn't discuss this in a strategy session, work session, it just showed up. I'm glad you did the background work on what these other communities, but these other communities have mileage rates that are two and a half to four times what we have. So they're, they have a lot of deep staff, and like he says, it's nothing to do with the person, and the person, correction, she came on board in August of 2016.
15.
16.
I've got her chart.
16. She came in during the election.
November of 15. I have the chart.
Yeah, I think it was 15. I think he's right. But, you know, to that point, what we ought to do is you ought to bring all the non-reps, bring it together as a package, and say, here's the roles and responsibilities, here's the FTE based on that role responsibility, because I certainly don't want her working any more than 40 hours a week. It's not fair. So making the argument, we should pay, making the argument, we should pay her more because the roles and responsibilities and the skills of that person, I can accept that.
Wait a minute, she's a management person. You can't restrict her to 40 hours.
Not saying we're going to continue to work for 90 hours a week, but we should pay her more for that. That's not right. So you have to figure out where these roles and responsibilities, and I think you should bring all the non-reps in, and we should evaluate all the non-reps because it's not fair to piecemeal or take them one off, right?
In reality, all of them have been reviewed, and I think the supervisor and other people, I'm speaking. Other people have been reviewed. You said in a email that you thought that if there was going to be anything more than a cross-the-board 2% raise, that there should be reviews, and the supervisor has done that and reviewed everybody. This is one where we are saying that this person deserves this title because she's actually doing, has been doing the work for a year and a half, and it's not setting her aside differently. The other people are going to be getting raises, as you will see in the next budget amendment of 2017, of 2018. And we have discussed this numerous times. I've come before this board, and you've heard it, and other people have heard, that, one, the clerk's department was understaffed for their statutory duties, and we've made changes to where we're performing more duties as required by state law. This person has stepped up and done those things without compensation, and she's been doing director finance-type work. We're not creating another department head. We're just acknowledging that she's doing that work. She still reports to me, and that's all we're doing. And I think it's appropriate. I think it's necessary. I think it's legal, and we should do it.
Okay.
But Jerry, I'm going to correct you on something, because when this budget discussion happened, when the budget discussion happened with this board in December, I asked a direct question. I said, there are no raises for non-reps in here, correct? And there's no plans for non-rep raises, correct?
No. Saying there's no plan is not correct. What we said was that we were going to be doing merit reviews, and yet that takes time. We were slaying a lot of dragons besides this, and the supervisor met with, yes, it is.
No, it's not. Go watch the video.
We've always talked about, I've got the video, and we've talked about this, and he's done the reviews. And how do you then propose to do, to put a space in the budget and say, I'm going to put $10,000 in here for raises just as a spot holder? What are the people going to think? Oh, we're not going to get raises? You put $100,000 in, they say, oh, boy, we're really going to cash in? This was a very rational and reasonable way to do it.
No, it wasn't. It was planned.
Okay, we're off-topic. We're really on item five, gentlemen?
Number four.
Both. Okay. We're really on item five at this point, so. Any other questions or comments from the board?
So the finance director will continue to report to the clerk's office, Jerry Vorba?
That's correct.
That's highly unusual if you have a finance director. It's a title.
We work very, we work very closely with each other. I mean, this is, we're a very lean operation.
All right. Who is going to do the budget preparation this year?
Me and Cindy.
That's right.
And Mark, and maybe other people from the clerk's office.
We work together.
I'm not overly tied up on boxes and organization charts, to tell you that.
You've got to turn your mic on.
Let me start again. I'm not overly caught up with org charts or boxes or who reports to who. The fact of the matter is, we've kind of all fallen into a nice rhythm of who does what and who helps each other, and it's working, it's working very well. I mean, Cindy and the treasurer's department work very closely together. Cindy and the supervisor's office work very closely together, and then in the accounting function within the clerks, it's not a rigid hierarchy. It's a very, it's a very fluid...
Mark, the hierarchy is determined by state law of who reports.
Yeah, and we haven't been following that for the last eight years because everything has been done by Ron Edwards. And now, we're finally, we're finally putting the accounting function back where it belongs in the clerk's office.
Well, yeah, the accounting function, but you said she's more than the accountant. That's what I'm...
Yes, she's the finance director.
All right.
She does more than that old role.
She's really...
So she should be reporting to Kurt Heisey?
No, I think, I think the, I think the challenge is, she's, and this is what we've been saying, is she's been taking on multiple roles. She's been taking on the managing the accounting department role, and she's been taking on this director of finance role, both. So you could make a decision that she's, she could, she could go in one place or the other. If we had...
These other townships?
You can't compare them to the other townships because, because...
Good, thank you for saying that.
Because Canton Township has eight people in their accounting department and seven people in their finance department. We don't. If we, if we went out for a seven mil increase and we had the luxury of hiring more accountants and more finance people, number one, we all wouldn't be working so hard, and number two, we'd have a more defined organizational structure. I just think this is recognition, and if this would have come up for a vote in December, I would have voted for it, and if it comes up for a vote today, I'll vote for it. This is in recognition of what she has done to straighten out the finances in this organization and in recognition of all the hard work that she's done.
You don't want to wait to...
So what do you say about the other non-reps, Mark? That's part of the next discussion, the next agenda item.
So we're going to go through person by person? No, there's a lumped number in there.
Okay, we're on the next agenda now, so.
Wait, I'm not done with this one.
Gary?
I agree with Bob about public performance appraisals. I also agree with everybody that certainly this person deserves to be compensated in a way that is, she represents the township. But the concern I have is, like it or not, we still have people that are, that are working here that are more loyal to the previous administration than they are to the current administration. I still have a concern about it. I'm very concerned about giving them any more money.
We're going to do loyalty tests, litmus tests?
Chuck, if you spend five minutes in here, you'll know who is loyal to which organization.
Yeah, and we... I just measure performance.
Okay.
And we also have employees that are, that are on Facebook during the day, on company, on township computers.
We are, we are way off track, and I'd like to call the question. Any other discussion by the board? Any discussion by the public, questions? Well, I'm confused because, Mr. Clerk, you said this is really a reclassification, but that's not what the motion is.
It's giving the title to the job she's already performing, because she's doing two roles. She's an accountant, and she's doing the functions that a normal person in that classification would do. So we're giving her the title, and we're giving her a raise commensurate, really, as you can see, under, she has worked 16 months in the year '17, and we have not compensated her for that, and I think that's wrong.
I'm very sensitive to having someone do a position that is misclassified. If they have job duties and responsibilities that, especially in the case of someone who's female, you know, you run into issues of discrimination. So if this is a reclassification to take into account her current duties, that's a different matter to me than creating a position and then having a starting salary and making it retroactive. I don't know, I don't know how to solve that problem. I own the motion because I wrote it. I, I don't know if I would redo it. Do you have any suggestions to, you know, I think this is the, this is the most plain English way of handling the issue. And again, we're not backfilling the accountant position.
So what percent raise is this?
It's about a 7%, 8% raise.
So I'm not, I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to paying her what she should be paid. I'm not opposed to the position. I'm opposed to the way in which this is not being treated holistically, and I also think, and I'm also very worried about the budget creep, because if this individual is working 90 hours a week, as it's been stated, and you don't backfill the accountant position, then how does that situation change? And if you do backfill the accountant position, now we've just made a $2.5 million commitment over 20 years. Hundred and some thousand a year, I'm extrapolating, but...
Clearly, not doing it.
How are you going to solve the problem with the individual working more, too many hours, without backfilling a position? You haven't answered that question.
I have answered it several times. We're not backfilling the position.
Right, but she's still going to have to work the hours and get paid more money so she'll feel better about it.
So she'll still work 90 hours a week. She'll work whatever's necessary.
She gets the job done.
So if we change this motion to be... Instead of create the position of finance director, and we say reclassify the position of accounting to finance director, that basically does away with the accounting position and reclassifies it as finance director. I think that covers Jack's question, and it also would do a little bit better for, hey, we don't have this other person sitting here that we can put an $80,000, $90,000 person in, right? So this other open spot. Does that make sense if we change the verbiage to, instead of create the position of, reclassify the position of accounting? And that's, I guess that's what the title says, is accounting.
So you're suggesting, and then, and then eliminate the accountant position?
By saying reclassifying the position of accounting to finance director, you have basically eliminated the accounting position by the reclassification.
The words in here were create. That's what...
So if we change that, then you've gotten rid of the accounting position, and you basically have accomplished the same thing.
So reclassify the accounting position to the finance director?
Correct. And then we don't have...
We don't go up a headcount.
We don't go up a headcount. Makes sense, sir?
Yeah, it makes sense. I'm just trying to look at, you know, I'm trying to come up with...
I would also, to Chuck's question, ask for legal opinion as to whether that's, that's like the equivalent of paying somebody a bonus, right? Is that even, is that permissible?
Well, that's what merit pay is.
Yeah, I've done some very preliminary research while we're here tonight. Michigan Constitution, Article 11, Section 3, precludes retroactive increase for public officers. There's an Attorney General opinion, however, that says that that constitutional provision does not apply to employees, only public officers.
Only elected officials?
Public officers.
Police, fire?
No, sheriff, electeds.
Electeds? But because by being a finance director, by being a finance director, does that have a different status than...
I would submit that it does in accordance with the Attorney General provision. What the Attorney General did in one article was look at the minutes to the Constitution of 1963 and noted that the word employee that was in the Constitution of 1908 was deleted in the Constitution of 1963 from that provision. Therefore, it appears that the constitutional founders' intent was to exploit, exclude employees from that prohibition on retroactive modification of salary, retroactive increase in salary.
So...
Okay, let me, oh, sorry.
Can I ask?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, does the title director carry any significant stat, any status that would be different than a rank-and-file employee under that? God, that was a terrible question. Let me try it again.
I understood exactly what you're asking, and that's a valid question. I can't give you a definitive on that right now. If I had to give you an opinion right now, I would say that because public officer appears to contemplate elected officials, not appointed officials or employees, a appointed official would be excluded from that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board or the public? I'm going to take a borrow from your recommendation, Gary, and I'm going to move that the Board of Trustees concur in the recommendation of the supervisor and clerk to reclassify the position of Plymouth Township accountant in the clerk's office to finance director and appoint Ms. Cynthia Kushner to the position at a starting salary of $90,000, retroactive to January 1, 2018.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, please take your roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
No.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you. Next up is item F6. This is the Budget Amendments, 2018, first quarter. Six or five? Five? Item five, sorry.
Somebody gonna explain these?
Yes.
Our finance director.
She's coming. She's working on the audit right now.
Well, let's just take the fourth one down. Firefighter. We had one of the three new hires resign.
Uh, that is correct. One of our new firefighters that we hired in the end of November received a job offer from the city of Dearborn. He accepted it, and he resigned.
You know, how much additional pay Dearborn was giving him over and above what we were?
I don't know that off the top of my head right now. I do know that the defined benefit pension they offer and healthcare upon retirement were big things. Another issue that I know is, a, a new hire firefighter in Dearborn gets more vacation time than a new hire firefighter in Plymouth Township.
Dearborn's just about broken, Kurt.
Really? Really?
They are.
Okay, so let's start back up at the top. Item five. Ms. Kushner? You're on.
All right.
I don't know how you wanna do this, if you'd like-
The other microphone, please.
You gotta use that one tonight.
Okay, sorry.
And, I don't know if you just wanna go all the way down, or you just wanna take questions from the board, or, or what?
Well, gee, sorry. Just briefly, I'd like to just talk about how the schedules are arranged. I don't know if the board's gone through it already. We started out with general fund expenditures, and the fourth column in is the approved, the amount approved by the board already for the corresponding line item. The next column over is the adjusted amount needed to get to the next column, which would be the new proposed budget line item. We have a brief reason for the adjustment, and then the box to the right shows the effect of, um, the effect on fund balance. So, note that if you're increasing the expenditure, you're reducing the fund balance. If you reduce the expenditure, you're increasing the fund balance. So, the first page goes through the expenditures, and, so, we're looking at adding an additional one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight forty-three of expenditures. But, on the next page is some better news. We also did budget adjustments for, for revenue. And, the box to the right there also shows the effect on fund balance, where an increase in revenue would increase the fund balance, and a decrease in revenue would decrease the fund balance. So, basically, we have an additional seventy-six thousand, three hundred dollars of revenue, when you netted against the expense. It's an additional sixty thousand, five forty-three.
Over the budget.
Correct.
But, but it's not all the same budget, is it? Because some of this is block grant, and-
It's, um, the block grant is in the general fund budget.
It is, but it's severely restricted, the way it can be used.
Well, that's why, if you look at the last three items on the expense, I've got it matched with the last three items on the revenue side. So, we're looking at about sixty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars for a friendship station improvement, and we expect to get a hundred percent reimbursed, so I have sixty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars of revenue on the other schedule.
Okay. So, the salary adjustments, twenty-six thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
May I have a list of by name and the percentage increase?
Yes, there is. Kirk has it.
Okay, let's look at it.
I don't have it with me, because I believe it would violate confidentiality of the employees.
Oh, all, all public employee's salary is public information.
If it's released by the public body.
Well, we're the public body.
I say release it.
Okay.
It's been on our website before. We just had a discussion on-
Then you can take that off, then you can take that line item off. There will be, then there will not be any merit pay for, for employees.
Why not? Why don't we go through it?
Well, you can take it off and bring it back with the backup.
Yeah, let's go through-
We've always had-
I mean, come on, let's go through them, let's go-
I can tell you, you can go to the U of M website and find by name what everybody's salary is to the penny.
Okay.
So, it's not, it's not a big secret.
Okay.
So, you, if you wanna take it off for tonight, and then we can bring it back, or?
In fact, our website for years had posted the total pay of, of all the individuals in the township.
Yeah, but you were asking, what you're asking for is a different document. You're asking for is a list of the non-union employees and their, and their recommended-
Pay raise.
Pay raise, or I would prefer that, you know, it's a, it's a merit pay, 'cause that's what I thought the board wanted me to do last year, so-
That's okay. Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, but we have to go through them.
You wanna go through them?
Yeah, we just went through one.
So, what do you plan on doing when you go through them? How are you gonna evaluate people that you don't even work with?
Oh, I don't intend to evaluate-
You have to make your case. It's like any other board. It's like in the private sector, you have, you make your case, just like you just did.
Okay, then, you know, then I'm, I'm just more inclined to give across the board raises like I did last year.
Well, we can talk about it in a strategy session or whatever, but, okay, this portion, this one, a large portion of that twenty-six thousand was the raise we just gave to Cindy Kushner, right?
It's factored in there.
Maybe eight thousand of it, or something?
No, no, six, six thousand, six hundred.
That's, includes the retro?
That's everything. That's total.
Total, okay. So, that leaves about another twenty thousand that was distributed among the remaining.
Correct.
All right. I, I'm not, I'm not really clear why you're objecting to that.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure what could be gained by coming up with a list of people and saying, "This person gets no raise, this person gets two percent, this person gets four percent." My, my recommendation to Kurt, which, which he has implemented here, was that we come up with a pool of money. And we say, "This is the pool of money that we want to distribute to the non-represented employees based upon merit."
That's the way the private sector does it.
You gotta bring it to the board.
This is government.
We're the board, we're the board, Mark.
And, and we're asking you to approve twenty-six thousand dollars in salary increases for non-represented employees.
But, we'd like to know who's getting what.
But, but do you wanna do that in a public forum?
We just did.
We did for one person because of, of a, of a-
Of a job reclassification.
Job reclassification.
I've never heard of a board not approving the line item.
I've never heard of that.
For pay raise. Not, forget about this board, but I'm talking about school boards, other township boards, cities. Typically, it's a line item. That comes with the territory of being a government employee.
You show, you know, I mean, I'd get into personalities of individuals, but you show the individual, you show their pay rate, you show their last increase, you maybe show them the market range for that, their years of experience, and why you make the case that, you know, Sally Smith is three percent, and Joe Doe is two percent. You don't have to get into, 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 you know, into too much on it. I don't like public appraisal, but at some point, it's the board's decision.
The, the, all of these people that are getting one, it's gonna be public information after the fact. We're just doing the pool of money without having to discuss in an open forum why.
Well, then, but we're the board.
I, I know that. All we're saying is, it, you will know exactly who got what after the pool of money, and so will everybody else.
But, we wanna know before they get the raises. Just like you would in the, if you worked for a private sector and you went to your board of directors-
I don't-
And you said, "These, these are the raises," you would have them by individual?
I don't think that a bus driver, or, I'm sorry, the senior citizen coordinator at the friendship station appears, you know, in front of the board of directors for a public review. I, I think it's-
I don't, you're not talking about having a performance review in public. You're just talking about having the amount and the position.
Look, you show, you show the employee, you show the position, you show years of experience, you show market range. So, for example, for the bus driver, maybe the market range is X to Y, and here's where they fall in the range.
Why, why years of experience? Experience in what?
Data points.
In what? So-
In their job.
Driving the bus.
They've been there for X-
So, the role of the supervisor, what's my role in all of this? I just-
You're the chief HR guy.
Uh, yeah, I am. So, why shouldn't I make these decisions and tell you what I decided on?
This is not, this is not normal.
Okay, then I'll just give across the board, you know, increases to everybody.
Well, no, we can talk about it. I mean, probably, we, what we should've done was had a study session on this, because I was under the impression we were not giving any raises as a result of the approved budget.
Well, if you go back to the budget deliberation, that was the-
Well, we had zero in there.
But, but I'm okay. I mean, I think people should get raises.
I thought we had zero in-
Because this one, because this board wanted to have merit pay, because that's what you do in the private sector. So, I gave you what you wanted.
I agree.
And I wasn't going to put a line item in there with twenty-seven, you know, thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, because everybody would then backtrack that money.
Kurt, in the, in the private sector, I don't go to my boss and say, "Give me a pool of money, and I'm not gonna tell you how I'm gonna allocate it until afterwards." We go through the individuals, and we say, and we say, and you wanna, I wanna believe you're fair-minded, right? You, you guys are fair-minded. You go through the individuals, you don't have to, you know, I mean, you don't have to get too detailed.
I, I think that will be a-
But, you, you compare it to range, and you compare it to the market value. You don't go to your boss and say, "Give me, give me twenty-six thousand dollars worth of raises, and I'm not gonna tell you who I'm gonna give them to until afterwards." That's just not how it works.
Okay.
I've worked in the private sector for thirty, over thirty years.
Okay. And I've worked in the public sector, and I know how we do it, too, so.
In essence, some people are getting raises and some are not. And we just didn't wanna make that public like this until it happened. Everyone's gonna get to know, because it's all public. Can we go into closed session on that?
No.
No. So, one way is to approve it as is, take it off, and let's talk about it in a study session, or, you know, whatever blows your hair back.
It'll delay it another.
Can I approve the twenty-seven thousand dollars as merit increases, not tied to any particular people until we get to sessions that we all review the names that are there?
That's a little awkward, I don't know. The twenty-six thousand is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, whatever it is.
Obviously, these gentlemen have already done their homework, have figured out, you know, percentage-wise, the numbers in ballpark. I mean, put thirty thousand in, I don't care.
I don't know, how, how can I, how can, how can you, as an elected official, sit here and say, "You're approving merit raises, but you don't know what they are." You don't know, and with no disrespect intended, assume it's a different supervisor, you don't know if there's favoritism going on, and you can't actually say that, because you don't know what people are gonna get.
And I wanna know-
Sorry, not yelling at you.
You know, I, I, I put the thirty thousand in the pot. Now, let's, the seven of us go through the pot and decide, okay, you guys were right or not right.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm okay with, I'm okay reviewing the recommendations.
I can give you-
You just wanna do it before you give the raises.
Well, I, I, I like Gary's suggestion that we would, that we would allocate, allocate the money tonight, because we're doing, we wanna, we don't wanna be revisiting budget amendments every other week here.
Exactly.
Let's do that. What I can do is provide you with a list of the, I don't, I don't want names, I, we can do it by position. I mean, I, it creates a little bit of a buffer.
A real little bit, because we know where everybody is.
But I do not want, I will tell you, I do not, I do not wanna have our appointees in this room in some kind of, you know, star chamber, where they're going to be, you know, grilled by us, or, or critiqued in some way. I, I think, first of all, that's my job, okay? I'm the CEO, and I've interviewed all of our non, non-union employees. I have sat down with them, we have done performance reviews, and I've evaluated all of them, because I work with them every day. And so do these guys, Jerry and Mark.
I, I understand that, but it's public information.
And I'm not-
Ultimately, it is.
Ultimately, it is. And that's why, I mean, that's why I can put together, I, hold on, I'm, I'm, I'm working with you here. I, I can put together a list based on their ti, their job title, and eventually, that will be FOIA'd, that will be, you know, out there in the public domain. My, my political opponents from two years ago have FOIA'd Sue Bram's personnel records, they have FOIA'd Sandy's personnel records, they FOIA'd, FOIA'd Amy Hammie's personnel records. So, I'm, I'm sure that similar things will go on in this case. But, I can provide you with something that will try to insulate these people as, as much as possible, but not, but, but by not concealing where that, where that pay is gonna go.
But, but for years, for years, you can go back on the township website, I'm, I'm sure the archives are there. I think it, we did it, what, Chuck, three, four years in a row? Had a spreadsheet out there that showed what every employee was paying.
It has to. It, it has to. It's all public information. We know that.
So, why don't we stop doing it?
I'm not sure-
We're not stopping doing it, because it's all going to be, we just didn't wanna, in a public forum, say, "Okay, so-and-so's getting one percent, so-and-so's getting four percent." Just, we didn't wanna embarrass people here in a, in a public forum.
And, and I'm not-
It'd be, it, it's no different if you say, "Everybody's getting two percent." You know, everybody gets two percent, it's public information. All of this information, by title, is public information.
Yeah. Nobody's disagreeing with that, Jerry.
Right.
What we're disagreeing is the process that says-
Before you give the raises, or decisions.
These are the seven people, and there could be one person getting twenty thousand dollars out of this, and, and we wouldn't know. So, as a board-
Okay.
We'd just like to know.
But, can you give me, can you give, can you give me the flexibility tonight? Can you give me that funding that I'm looking for?
Take thirty thousand. That's fine, you guys have seven.
No, it's twenty, it's twenty-
Twenty-six.
It's twenty-five, six, forty-eight, point forty.
Okay.
And, but you're not gonna give the raises until it comes back.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Bob, what do you, what do you think? There, there is no, there is no intent to hide anything here, or give one person a big raise. The point is that we didn't want, because we're moving to, instead of a flat two percent across the board, we wanna do it more merit-based. And once you do it merit-based, people's individual performance is gonna come out in a public forum. We don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
So, what, what if we said, "Okay, folks, we want a total pool of two percent." And people who do not meet expectations get zero. People who meet expectations get two. People who exceed expectations get four. Something like that.
I appreciate that, but, the, if, if it's merit-based, it's either gonna come out now, or come out a year later, because at some point, you're gonna have to say what Sally Smith was paid, and Sally Smith didn't get a raise. And that's gonna be really apparent, because it, you can't keep it confidential. It's public money.
So, someone would have to go on a website and look at Sally's last year's salary versus this year's salary, and say, "Hey, Sally didn't get a raise."
Every township employee is gonna know.
Yeah, yeah, they will. They're gonna know. I'd rather, I would rather make them work for it than to sit here in this forum and say, "Sally didn't do anything. She did not meet expectations, she gets zero." I would rather do it the, the other way.
You don't necessarily have to do it that way. You can, you can, you can do it, you know, look at ranges. So, so what if Sally is walking on water?
There is no Sally, by the way.
Did you, did you know, yeah.
What'd you say?
I thought there was no Sally.
All right, thank God.
Sally's going like this.
Bursting through the door. So, take a hypothetical, do you, have you, have you done the homework to understand what the market va, okay, assume you have. So, so, it's X to Y, Sally might get zero because she's at the top of the range, not because she's got poor performance, she's at the top of the range, right?
Well, that wouldn't be a merit-based performance value.
There's a lot of merit people, people who get paid merit, that are at the top of their base scale-
We still have a range.
And get zero raise.
We, we have people who-
Many companies do that.
I'm about to agree with you, Bob. We have people that are, that are very much at the top of their range. We have people that are very low, we just had an example in front of us, where it was We just had an example in front of us where it was very below the range. And, you know, historically, some of that stuff you can't fix. But I, again, I, I can certainly provide you with a list, um, of where the allocations are going. That is a public document. It will be FOIA'd probably before it's in your hands. And, uh, and, and people are going to have, people will do the math and they will figure out, uh, where things fell.
So a hundred fourteen thousand, this new proposed budget amount? No, not a hundred fourteen. Where is the, where is the increases? What page is it on? Show me what line it is. The total pot. I'm trying to get to the total pot. Is it one twenty-three, one hundred, one hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-six?
What are we looking at?
The, the supervisory salary adjustments.
I'm trying to figure out what the size of the 2% pot was.
It's good. I, I'm not sure what that...
What do you mean?
I'm not sure what that ninety thousand, one hundred twenty-six is.
That was just an example. 2% pot was a thrown-out number. That's not the amount.
Oh, we didn't use that methodology?
No. It was all individual. So we, we figured out what we were going to give people and then totaled it.
Oh, okay. So it's not very scientific. So you didn't take a, you didn't say, "We have X number of dollars to allocate."
No, no. We said, "This person gets this much, this person gets that," and then totaled it.
Oh, so some people may get a 10% raise in here.
They're not.
That's not going to happen.
The only person that's getting that kind of raise is Cindy Kushner.
Ten percent. Given her a raise already?
Eight percent, yeah.
So one other question I have is, was our HR director part of this process?
No.
She's leaving.
She's still here.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
I did, I did the...
That's a zero percent.
I did, I did the analysis. I met with the appointees.
Okay.
And then I, and then I also met with Jerry and Mark and we collaborated as well.
Okay.
And in the future, you probably need to have one outside person on that little committee.
We'll get somebody from Northville.
Somebody from Northville? Yeah, get Nix or somebody?
That's a joke. I did that to get the rise out of Bob there, but...
I would make, I would caution that if there's going to be four, uh, board members part of the committee, that would violate open meetings.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, then, then take one of the three off and you put an outside person, something. You got to have something different than all on the inside. Because we on the outside get a little different perspective.
You just cannot have four members meet and deliberate or make a decision without being in a public meeting.
You're right.
I, I, Chuck, to answer your, partially answer your question, I do get feedback from trustees, um, frequently regarding employees, um, both union and non-union. And that is a factor in our decision-making process.
What do you do with that information?
Pardon me?
What do you do with that information?
I log it in my memory banks.
See, then I'm happy because I'm one of those that give you constant...
Yes, you do.
That just says, "Hey, I'm here pretty much every day and I know which employees..."
Are loy, are loyal and which ones are not.
Well, no, just the ones that, when people walk out this door, I ask every single person that walks out the door, "Did you have a good experience in Township Hall today? And if you did not, why didn't you?" And if somebody says, "Well, this person yelled at me," guess what? I find out the names. And those kinds of things, they're important.
You're walking around in here that much?
Yeah, he's here all the time.
What do they say about Clinton?
I stay away on purpose.
You know, I was having a bad day today, Gary, so take that into consideration. I have a cold heat.
Let's get back on task.
Yeah, okay. All right. Let's have some other questions about this. Any other questions here? Can either Cindy or Mark comment on the district court fees?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have one question.
Well, hold on. Can I get my question? District court fees?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, district court.
Want to talk about district court? Okay. All the members of, of, all the municipalities that are member of the Thirty-Fifth District Court, which is Canton, Plymouth, Plymouth City, and the two Northvilles. Generally, these communities get any excess funds back from the court on an annual basis based on caseload and a few other things. The Thirty-Fifth District Court is experiencing the same thing that many of the participating municipalities are going through. That is trying to fund their OPEB and pension costs. The Thirty-Fifth District Court is not well-funded in either of those areas. So, um, at the last quarterly board meeting, um, the board members voted to, um, stop distributing the money and put it towards the OPEB and pension liability until those things are adequately funded.
That could take how many years? Ten, twenty?
Could be more than five, maybe ten.
But it may be less than that because it's my understanding that the bond payments on the courthouse are going to be expiring, I believe, this year or next year. And then the, the, that amounts to about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar...
Right.
New money for the court.
Correct.
And that they have promised us that they're going to put that money towards OPEB.
Towards, yeah, they're, this, actually, this month, we're going to meet and discuss where it's going, OPEB or pension. At the same time, the board has asked the finance committee to evaluate closing down the defined benefit plan. And as we know, if that happens, the, the contributions skyrocket because the plan is closed. So based on that evaluation, which isn't complete yet, all we know is the liabilities are significant and the board is trying to do its best to shore up those liabilities.
And the judges really run everything there? So you don't have, so new employees, to make the decision for new employees not being in the defined benefit? Has that been made?
That's what we're discussing on, at our, uh, May twenty-third meeting.
But the judge, judges, the chief judge has the final decision? Or does this committee?
Uh, no, it's the board.
The board?
The board.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget amendments?
Tell me about the Bosch grants we got. Are they new?
Those are grants that we received from Bosch for the planned cleanup of the Taquish Creek scheduled for June second. And also, we are working with Friends of the Rouge on the creation of a rain garden at, at Township Park. And so that is money that we received through a grant application that was submitted by Sarah Weisell and with assistance from me and others.
So Bosch is funding both of them?
They're substantially funding them, yeah. And I think Friends of the Rouge is providing a lot of in-kind service as well. To the rain, especially to the rain garden thing.
Well, thank you to Bosch. These were in this calendar year?
Yeah.
Again, I, I, maybe this was set, the community stabilization, what, what is that again? I, I lost that.
That's the replacement for, oh, you want to talk about it?
Go ahead, no, go.
No, that, um, that's personal property reimbursement from the state. So as they've been reducing the personal property, they reimburse us. Uh, when I first calculated that, the, the state gives you guidance every year on what it's going to be. And then voila, it appeared to be more. So the guidance that they gave us, uh, for next year is now more than what we originally budgeted.
Who does the calculation? The state of Michigan or we do it?
The state of Michigan does.
Based on data from the assessing department?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board or from the public? Uh, Cindy, what would a motion on this look like? Is this a, do we have a sample?
I've, I've got one, I think.
Oh, okay. Uh, okay, any other questions? Then, Mr. Clerk, you want to take a shot at it?
Uh, yes, Mr. Supervisor. I move to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero five dash fifteen dash twenty-seven, authorizing the township clerk to make the... To make the twenty eighteen general fund budget and twenty eighteen water and sewer fund budget amendments.
Water and sewer?
Yes, they're included in there.
Okay.
It's page three. There was two items on page three.
Hold on.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is that, are you done with your motion, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, I need a second. Second? Okay, motion's made by Clerk Borber, seconded by Trustee Heitman. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll when you're ready.
Supervisor Heitzing?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Clerk Borber, yes. Trustee Kermy?
No.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Next up is...
Hey, Don.
Pardon me?
Don just left.
Oh, yeah, we're not ready for him.
Can we take a break for two minutes?
Can we do the storm drain agreement?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's do the storm drain agreement. Item F six is the approval of a storm drain agreement with Auto Park LLC. Mr. Richmond.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Um, this is one of our standard stormwater agreements that we have to work with, with Wayne County. As you may remember, Wayne County requires the township to accept jurisdiction of a stormwater management system that's constructed to comply with their stormwater management ordinance and administrative rules. The storm drain agreement passes this responsibility onto the owners of the property benefited by this drainage improvements. This project in front of you is a, it's an existing building that essentially changed ownership. And in the process of changing ownership, they wanted to repave their parking lot. Wayne County required them then to upgrade their storm system. Uh, it's a project, it's a building that is on Helm Street. Happy to answer any questions.
So you're saying the structures, the drain structures had to be changed because normally you don't take this for a repave?
They, the requirement is, is that if you come in and repave a site, you have to bring your stormwater system into compliance with their current stormwater ordinance. In this case, because of when it was originally constructed, there was no stormwater quality measure. So they had to come in and add a, and in this case, I think they added a bioretention area or a rain garden to meet that requirement.
So repaving's trigger...
Yes.
Wow.
If they, if you, if, if an owner was to come in and just mill off two inches and repave those two inches, they're not required. But as soon as you start tearing out the pavement, replacing the pavement, they're going to make you bring your stormwater system into compliance with their ordinance.
Oh, you just clarified it. If you mill it off or put a cap on, no permission.
No, 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 right.
All right. So nothing's changed then and, all right, I was wondering. All right, I see.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Comments from, questions from the public? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero five dash one five dash twenty-eight, authorizing the township supervisor to sign the Wayne County permit M four nine eight 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 and approve the storm drain agreement with Auto Park LLC and authorize the township supervisor and clerk to execute same.
Thank you. Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Clerk Borber, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heitzing?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we will take a, about a ten-minute recess. Okay, we're going to go back on the record now and talk about item F seven. This is the draft park concession agreement. Let me just give a little background on, on what this is. If a authority is created by the city and the township, the authority would be called the Plymouth Area Recreation Authority. Uh, that would be, it's contemplated as of now to be a seven-member board. It might be five, it might be seven, it'll probably be seven. That will be a seven-member board that would be appointed by this body and representatives from the city. They would then become a freestanding legal governmental entity. They would be an authority. They'd be a separate unit of government in the eyes of the state. So what they would do is they would then sign a contract with Park, which is the Plymouth Arts and Recreation Center, uh, to manage and operate the Central Middle School property, the building, and the, um, and the theater. That would be contemplated, uh, as part of the, um, the improvements under the, under the, under the Recreation Authority. So I just want to remind the board that this is a contract that we will not be a party to, but we can certainly influence the outcome and, um, and provide recommendations to Park and then ultimately to the individuals who would be serving on a, uh, an authority. Now, the document in front of you is the same one that was provided to us by Park back in January. I have a copy that I marked up pretty substantially. I've sat down with Don Sunin, with Mark Malcolm, with Mayor Woolcott, with, um, Colleen Pober from the city. And I've made several changes over the last several months to the concession agreement. And certainly, my changes are not, um, binding or, or the final, the final authority on this. And I think you will find that many of my concerns are the same that you have as well. So what I would like to do, um, I know Mark has some questions and comments, and I'm sure some of you, the rest of you do as well. So what I would like to do at this point is probably just, I'd like to bring Don Sunin up here. And this is not a, you know, we're not going to rehash whether or not Park is a good project or a bad project or whether the authority is good or bad. Um, it's not a, we're not here to, you know, grill Sunin tonight again. Um, he's well-done at this point, I think. Uh, so what we want to do is just pretty, really just focus on the four corners of this agreement and ask any questions that we might have and any comments that we might have as well. This will serve not only as a, an indication of our preference to Park, uh, but hopefully serve as some legislative intent and historical reference for the authority if and when they are created. So this will be instructive for them. Okay. Don, why don't you just tell us right now, how did this document come to be and, and what, what are your intentions behind it?
Well, back several months ago, we felt it would be prudent to try to put a framework around how we thought this might work, to get the kind of the ball rolling, to create the straw man that we could all work from. So our attorneys, Dickinson, Wright, um, we worked with them to put together the Articles of incorporation for the authority, some recommended bylaws for the authority, which would have to be adopted by the authority. And then also, uh, the key points of what we thought the operating agreement would be between the authority and those that would operate the, the complex, uh, Park. And I want to make it absolutely clear, because there's still a lot of confusion out there. The authority, which would be formed by a combination of the township and the city, would own the property and that's it. And they would enter into an agreement with someone to operate it, which is not unusual in a lot of different, uh, entities like this. Uh, the city and the township don't want to, don't want to run the complex, uh, as a 501(c)(3). I think we can do it far more cost-effectively, and I know we can. And all those studies would suggest that you really do need to have a nonprofit 501(c)(3) operate these kinds of facilities. Otherwise, the costs generally get really out of hand when government tries to operate them. So that was a premise under which we put this project together. Now, as part of this project also, we've been raising private funds. We have at least six million dollars that are going to get donated. The property and money, the six million dollar worth of property, will be donated to the authority that would go into the building, totally donated. There is, it's not a loan, it's not, there's no return on it. It is totally donated to the authority. So we now need to enter into an agreement whereby Park would run this facility under conditions that are acceptable to the authority, which has significant input from the city and the township because they're appointing the directors that will serve on the board of the authority. So this authority, which will own the property, which would collect the, the, uh, put out the bond issue, that authority is really operated, at least initially, by an appointed board, by the township and the city. And maybe over time, and it is still up for a little bit of debate, over time, maybe that board gets elected or it's a combination of appointed and elected. But, uh, that can be determined. So the concession agreement that is before us tonight is really the operating agreement between the authority, which owns the property, and Park, which would operate the facility. I don't know, does that give a summary of it?
Yeah. What? Okay. A couple of the changes that I had just on page one here is, uh, you know, some of these bullet points, I don't know, I still don't know why they're in this document because they're really just a rehash of state law, like... they're really just a rehash of state law, like the bullet point, under formation of para and millage proposal. It's almost like boilerplate, that's all I, that's all I can describe it, because bullet point three is state law, bullet point four is state law, bullet point five, I would just add that following certification by the Secretary of State, the township and the city would then appoint members to the para board. Right now, it talks about a five to two split. I don't know if that's going to go over well with the city still, and that is still an item that's in, in.
That's for all you folks to work out. We don't care.
And again, I don't know why, so I don't know why that's in an agreement between, between the para board and, and Park. I mean, it's, I mean, unless you want to preamble, I mean, unless you're trying to create a historical record, I can, I can understand that.
Miss lawyers being lawyers.
Yeah, I know, right?
They gotta impress you with how much they.
I could whack, I could whack a lot of that out and not.
That's fine.
Not hurt it.
These are the talking points, really, the talking points for the agreement, and there's probably things in here that could be eliminated. This is not the agreement, this is a summary of the items that would go into the agreement. I mean, we didn't want to go after doing the final agreement. So the attorney suggested that they really put together a list that are talking points that we all agree on, and then it would go into an agreement.
Okay, so it's a summary, so going back to the top, it says summary of key terms. Okay, I, alright, I, I don't know.
I would recommend numbering these in the future, like an outline form, so you can refer to them. You don't have to say, the fourth one down under parties or whatever. It would make it easier to discuss. I see one typo, no, two typos. First page, Malcolm's name is spelled wrong.
Yeah, we noted that.
Okay, second is, this one's alarming, and that's why people keep calling me up, is Authority would schedule vote for August 2018 primary. Is that still on the table?
No.
It's not, it's November. We submitted this last January, and people have been making comments on it, the township has, the city has, and it hasn't been updated. I mean, it's been a, a moving target here, but obviously, we weren't quite sure how we would update it at any point in time, to be honest with you.
Okay. Page two, the, the first bullet point, the President of Park and Malcolm, I, I had asked already that that be struck.
Yeah.
It's.
We're fine with that.
Further down.
It's redundant, don't need it, right?
Yeah, I mean, the President of Park and Malcolm can show up at any meetings that they want, they'll all be public. Getting back to the one, two, the third bullet point, para board will adopt a resolution. That's all pretty much state law. Where? Oh, right here. The big bullet point, para board.
Yeah. I think the attorney here too is trying to point out wherever it was state law that required these things, just so we had all the information in one place at one time, so we didn't have to go back and be referencing these, these particular statutes.
Did, did board members have questions about the purpose, purpose of acquiring, constructing, operating, maintaining, and improving? Was that an issue for anybody? You gotta turn your thing on.
It was for me, but I had an email exchange with Don and, and I'm no longer concerned about that. It, I, yes, that's, that's what state law says, so that's the way it should.
Which section are you referring to?
That.
The third big bullet point on page two.
Page two.
Yeah, right, right there where your cursor is, yeah. The, the reason I had a concern about it, just, just to expand on that, is I, there is a distinction between what the Authority is going to do and what the, and Park, the people who are operating is going to do. The millage and the Authority are going to be responsible for the construction, and then Park is going to be responsible for the operation, the maintenance enhancement, et cetera. And I wanted to draw a line between those. So my initial thought was, we should remove operating, maintaining, and improving, but you can't do that, because that's what an Authority is required to do under the state.
Well, and the Authority can then delegate that operating to, to whoever, and that's why it needs to be in there. The Authority still have the responsibility for operating, but they can then enter into an agreement with anyone to operate.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing I had was, let's see, underneath conveyance of Park property, we have the, the last bullet point is not really a concern of the township, that's something that you guys have to work out with the city?
Yes, obviously.
And this kind of ties in with a couple paragraphs, but on page three, top of page three, the Authority and the company will enter into a concession agreement for a term of 35 years. Now, in our enabling document, we've asked that to be 20 years, because that's consistent with the millage, the maximum that the millage can be done. And I, I think, I just think 35 years is way too long. 20 years is a good number, because it's consistent with the, the millage.
What we would ask is that, at the end of the 20 years, if we go with 20 years, that if we're operating satisfactorily, that the contract will be renewed. If we're meeting the criteria, that the contract would be, be renewed.
At the discretion of the board? I mean, that's obvi, that should be obvious, right?
Well, maybe, maybe not. Who's, we don't even know if it might be on the board at that time.
Somebody has to make that determination. I would think that would be the para board. Who else is it going to be? Us?
No, I, I agree with you. That's why the para board needs to be independent, because they hold the, you know, they have to hold Park accountable to, you know, the performance metrics, right? And that board, at some point, may say, we want a different operator.
Yeah. Now, now, just to clarify, I mean, I, because I don't want to go there right now, but you're, you're in favor of an elected board down the road, right? Okay.
Yeah, I think, we don't have any problem with it, appointed or elected, but, you know, 20 years passes pretty fast. What we don't want is, at the end of the 20 years, you have a board that decides, ah, why don't we just develop this, turn the whole thing down? And they're not under any obligation to renew, even though you've got outstanding performance. And we don't know what that board might be comprised of. We have a little experience with that in the past here. So what we would like to see in this agreement, that, okay, fine, if we shorten the term up to 20 years, if we're operating, meeting all the criteria that'll get established as part of this agreement, that it will be renewed and extended beyond that 20-year period of time. But they, if we're meeting the, the community's requirements, meeting all the needs, meeting our performance, doing what we set out to do, that it would be automatically renewed for additional periods of time.
That's fair. Okay.
Because also, remember, we're making a major investment. We got a lot of private donors that are, we got millions of dollars in private funds that are going into this thing. And it's going to make people very queasy about making multimillion-dollar contributions to this project, if arbitrarily, at the end of a 20-year period of time, they can just bulldoze it down and develop it. That's going to be tough.
Don, they wouldn't bulldoze it down. The question is whether the board, the para board, would have the option of maybe a different model or a different operator, because, for whatever reason, but the entity would continue. So, so.
Necessarily. If at the end of the 20 years, they could just say, look, you know, we don't feel it's really in the best interest, feel it's in the best interest of the community, let's just develop it, let's build condos. We have no control in the future, 20 years from now, what that board might be comprised of.
But, no, I think you're mixing up the, the concepts, because this concept is, remember, you know, the Authority owns the property, the, the Authority would exist in, continue to exist in perpetuity. The Authority hires the operator, and the question is, after, at the end of 20 years, does the Authority have the authority to, to shop for a different operator, if it so chose? Because conditions could change. You could have, you know, you could be, you know, all of us have moved to Florida, and, and now you have a park operator that is not, maybe it's, maybe there's not specific SLA or service level agreement condition spelled out in the contract, but whatever, that board, that Authority wanted to shop, why, why would, it, it, I always believe if you're, if you're providing a good service at a good price, your, your customers don't ever really have a reason to shop.
I would like to think so, but also a little uncomfortable going to my, to the donors of the property, and people are putting millions of dollars into this project, that if they decided to do whatever they wanted to do with it, and there's no restriction on whatever they might do at the end of 20 years, they don't have to keep it, even doing what it's doing. It's wide open. If they wanted to develop the property, they essentially could. And so what we're trying to do is really narrow down what those options might be, if we're performing at the level that we all agree on at this point in time. If we're serving the community, if we're financially viable, if we're doing the things we're supposed to do, as spelled out in here, it would continue.
I still don't see, I, I still don't see why the selection of the operator would, you know, would control that, because the, the para board shouldn't be able to have the discretion to bulldoze the place at any time in the future.
Well, they do. They can do what they want. They could do anything they wanted. The way this is structured, they have the authority to do whatever they want.
I disagree, but I don't know if I'm right. I disagree, because I think it would violate their, the art, the original Articles of Incorporation under state law, because this entity has been organized to provide recreational services that have been spelled out in, in the agreement that we're going to sign with the city. So I think if that Authority board deviates from that and suddenly becomes a real estate speculative, speculative entity, I think somebody would have standing to sue, probably taxpayers, and say, wait a minute, para board, you, you've gone rogue and, and you, you're now going beyond the, your legislative charge. That sounds very impressive, but I, I don't know if I'm right or not. But, you know, aren't you, 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 you guys agree with that, right? Bob, I mean, theoretically, I think if you deviate, it's, you're deviating from your corporate purpose.
Yeah, absolutely. And then in addition to that, you know, if the para board had that discretion to be able to do that, they could simply tear up the contract at some point and decide to bring in the bulldozers. I mean, worse things have happened. The question is whether they are obligated to continue with this operator over that period of time. And to his question, to Don's point about, could you have an automatic renewal if they met performance criteria? I'm not sure at this point in time, we would really be equipped to really spell out what those performance criteria would be.
I don't think we would be.
No.
No.
I don't know that we could.
I don't know if we have to.
It'd be speculative, you know.
The para board really has that responsibility, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just finish up some of my last comments here. The bullet point towards the bottom, the third from the bottom, company will retain naming rights to the Park property and may sell such naming rights and retain the revenue. I would, and, and Don, you and I have had this discussion, my concern is, is twofold. One, you're saying that Park will have naming rights, will retain naming rights to basically public buildings at that point. That's troublesome for me. I, I see your point, though, in that you would still like to have the flexibility to say, in the, in the Central Middle School, that you could have the, the Gary Heitman room for.
Tuvinile delinquent.
Well, you could have, you could have, somebody might have put a, a, a room in her name for Harp Studies or something like that.
And we want the flexibility to be able to enhance the facility by, you know, we want to build a museum in a room, we want to do a music room.
Or you want to do a music room, or, or let's say the theater is now built, and you want to do a music room, or you want to sell chairs or something like that.
Bricks, seats, whatever.
I don't think that the para board, I don't think, I want the para board micromanaging that type of thing. Where I, where I have a trouble is, frankly, with the buildings themselves. I don't want to see the, you guys, you know, take a public building that's taxpayer, bought by the taxpayers, and maybe name it after a, a person or an entity that may be, that may not be in favor with the, the community.
And just to add to that, I, I'm curious about that. So if, if you sold naming rights for a million dollars for the theater, why wouldn't that money be used to help retire the debt service?
It probably would. I mean, I think there's some threshold that maybe we talked about, maybe a million dollars is a threshold that says, you know, if it's going to be over that, or if you wanted to find if it's a name on a building as opposed to a room in a building. I try to keep it simple enough, that the opportunity for large money after the fact on naming rights is minuscule. Once this project is funding, it's going to be really tough to get now. If there is, we're more than willing to talk about it.
Well, I'm thinking about, I, I want to make it fairly restrictive, that any, any, any naming rights to an asset, a real property asset over a half a million dollars, which, which is what was in my notes, that's really limited, limits it to probably Central Middle School and, and the theater. I mean, if Bob Dorsevitz wins the lottery tonight, and he wins $264 million, he may say, you know, I, I want to buy the naming rights to the, to the building. And, and I think the Authority, all I'm asking is, the Authority should have the final say in that, not, not Park.
If it's over a half a million, we, you know, I, I'm off the top of my head here and haven't consulted with others, but that's probably okay. We're talking about, you know, selling seats, selling bricks, putting your name on a classroom, if we want someone out there donating to, to redo the stage, the lights, sounds, things like that. We're not looking at going out raising five, seven million dollars for someone to rate, put their name on a building. If we got that, that goes to, obviously, would go to the Authority, go to para, and it would go to pay down the bond. We have no problem with that.
Then you have to delineate that somehow, because it would be, you don't want to overly restrict yourself. What if you need money for operating and somebody wants to sponsor some aspect of the operation and to maintain your operating?
The Broken Pipe Fund.
You know?
Well, we can always go to the para board and, and get there okay, I would assume. But if it's a half a million dollars, I'm not too concerned about that. I mean, if it's, if it's more than a half a million dollars, we'll sit down and talk about it, and, and certainly if there's some particular, we got to put a new roof on a building or something, I don't know. But certainly a half a million dollars, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about smaller amounts, and we're not talking about necessarily naming rights. So let's say we got to put in a, a half a million dollar new stage, light, and sound system. That's not naming rights, all right? We're not given naming rights. Maybe somebody wants to contribute to that, maybe we establish a fund to do things like that. But if we're talking about naming rights, putting them on a public facility, I think we're, we're fine with a half a million dollars, after the fact, because I think we still have an opportunity to do some between now and the millage.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, those were basically my big questions and concerns that I've already shared with you in the past, Don.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I had a couple of quick things. Go, go ahead, if anybody else.
Mark, you got anything?
Yeah, I had suggested a couple of things, which I already ran by Don and, and yourself in an email. One of them was, and, and the issue that I'm trying to address is, the one that I, the one concern that I've heard from citizens a number of times is, what if, what if the operation is not profitable? Do they have the right to come back to the taxpayers and ask for more money? And so I suggested some verbiage within this concession agreement. So one of the duties of Park would be, and here's my verbiage, company will maintain a positive fund balance and will not incur debt to fund operating expenses of the company. And then under the final bullet point, it says if the company fails to comply with the terms of the concession agreement, that would be one of those terms. And such default is not cured within six months after written notice of default, the Authority would have the right to terminate the concession agreement, appoint a substitute concessionaire to manage and operate the Park property, or dissolve the Authority as described in Article Four of the Articles of Incorporation. So basically, what I'm suggesting is that we're separating the construction of the building with the operation of the building, and that the operation of the building would be self-funding and make sure that.
We're fine with that, that's been the premise all along.
Did you say dissolve the Authority? That's a little drastic. Because they still have to pay the bonds back regardless.
Well, that's in the Articles of Incorporation, you couldn't, I said dissolve the Authority under what's written in the Articles of Incorporation. You couldn't dissolve the Authority under the terms of the Articles of Incorporation if there's still outstanding debt.
That's really beyond the scope of the concession agreement. That'd be up to the Authority, I'm sure you're going to want to have the lawyers look at that, as to whether you, you can just dissolve the Authority. Let's say there were still payments due on the bond issues, there's probably some legalese in there that, that needs to be addressed, but that really doesn't affect Park or the concession agreement.
But as an operating entity, nothing prevents you from going to a lending institution.
But as an operating entity, nothing prevents you from going to a lending institution and getting money in order to operate. I mean, that would be a debt. You just couldn't encumber the property.
Yeah, but you don't want it...
No, no, but...
...operation.
I, I know that, but under any business model, you could say, I'm doing this operation. These are my proposed, I'm going to be making this much money. Will you loan me this in order to do X? I mean, as an entity, you could go to a lending institution and acquire 90-day loan, a one-year... I mean, you get some sort of short-term...
You should have the flexibility to do that, but Mark said he didn't want that.
But you can't pledge, you could pledge revenue.
You could.
Yeah.
But Mark, you said you didn't want them to be able to incur debt, right? Or, or a deficit or something.
So even if they needed to make payroll, they can't make payroll and they have to go borrow money.
Short-term.
Well, I guess there's a difference between a cash flow loan and taking on debt.
Yeah, that's all I was just articulating.
Yeah, I mean, you could subordinate that debt to anything and it would require, the other thing would be to say any debt would have to be approved by the para board. If Park were to incur any debt, it would require the approval of the para board. We do not anticipate running into that kind of situation. But if it provides some comfort, that's fine.
Yeah, my concern is where that language would appear, and I do not believe it would appear in this document. It would appear in the Articles of Incorporation between the city and the township. And I think that would have to be language that I would need to see fairly soon.
Why wouldn't it appear in this agreement? This is an agreement with Park to make sure that they're running it profitably.
It could appear both places.
I would prefer that it appear in this agreement.
Well, yeah, you want to restrict us.
That could be in the condition that the authority is going to have on, on Park, which is what Mark is looking for.
I think you just say we can't incur any debt, and if we ever run into that situation, then we deal with the para board. I don't know.
So we is, we is Park?
Park does not need, we are not looking for the ability to borrow any money. In fact, when the comment, when it came up that, and we said, fine, if you want to put a restriction and we're not allowed to incur any debt, we're willing to take that. Now...
Are you sure you want to do that? What happens, some unforeseen, you have a big, a big event or something, you have to front money, and for four or five weeks, you're going to be short on cash. Wouldn't you want to have the ability to get a short-term loan from a benevolent banker who's community-oriented and would loan, loan you the money, you know, loan you 50,000 bucks for a month or something?
If we ever find ourselves in that kind of situation, we might want to go to the para board and say we want to do a 90-day loan. Can we get your approval to do that? I, I'll tell you what, we will be self-funded. I cannot imagine a set of circumstances where we need to go get a 90-day loan from a financial institution. We'll have enough resources in this project and the people involved with the project that I couldn't imagine that I'm going to the bank, asking them for a loan to get over a short-term issue. We're pretty comfortable with that. But like I said, if totally unforeseen circumstances were to occur, you know, I, I would assume that we would be able to make arrangements with the para board for some that is subject to their approval. You'd want that anyway. But if we want to put it in the agreement, we can. I don't feel it's necessary. But if there's a comfort level in having it there, how we do it.
I'd rather be silent on it because I think PARC needs some flacks in case there's a, some... We can't predict 25 or 35 years from now what could happen.
My concern Chuck is, is just if, if, if the operation for whatever reason is unprofitable and if they take out debt or whatever the case may be and can't repay it, I don't want taxpayers on the hook for operating losses or debt incurred by Park.
Is Park, okay, present, I don't think the public will, the, para is not responsible for PARC's debt yet.
I don't think they would be. I mean, if Park went under and filed bankruptcy, doesn't put, put para on the hook for the debt, I wouldn't think. I mean, you get an opinion on that, I guess, but...
It sounds to me like that's, this whole discussion is something that should be between the para board and Park.
Yeah, and I think we'll be very easy to get along with in that regard. I mean, we're not asking for any relief on it, and if you want to put some restrictions on it, we're happy with it.
I mean, all good issues, all good questions, but I'm not sure if it's our call.
Because there would be some circumstances where you could potentially have a lien against the property, like a utility bill, for example. Could have a lien, a potential lien against the property as a service address, right?
So to clarify, the PARC agreement will not be approved by the township board or the city commission. Is that correct? We're just having it put now. We're making suggestions.
But it will be approved by those that you appoint to that board.
Right.
The only document that we approve or disapprove is the Articles of Incorporation, which I would, again, I liken to a, like the constitution of, of para.
I mean, we're trying to be as absolutely transparent as we possibly can be on any of this. And, and I think we really, it behoves us to be as flexible as we can be on this as well. I mean, we understand the challenge. And another thing is we don't need to be overly concerned about it. I mean, a lot of things obviously can go wrong over time, but, you know, we're going to be pretty well-funded. We're very comfortable with the operating side of this and, you know, we'll have resources after we're into this thing and make the investment that we have personally. That's one of the benefits of having a private-public arrangement like we have here. There's a lot of private money in this, and the people putting up that private money aren't just going to walk away from this project. It's not like this is a totally funded by taxpayers issue and everybody has said, well, nice try, and they walk away. That's not the case here. And I think it's one of the benefits in having private-public partnerships like this.
Okay, any other questions from the board? I have a procedural question for the attorney. Under state law, that, and it is referenced here in this agreement, so I'll just use this as my reference. Section Six of Act, Act 321 requires that prior to adoption of Articles of Incorporation, which is what we do, the articles must be published at least once in a newspaper generally circulated within the city and township. So our, our newspaper of record is the Plymouth Eagle, or also known as The Voice, which is published in both communities. I got a couple of questions for Kevin, and I don't need an answer tonight. So for example, let's say we vote on the Articles of Incorporation on June 12th. The clerk has to publish something prior to June 12th. So when, what's the timing of that? Does that have to happen the week before June 12th? I think the state law is vague. I think all it says is it has to be published once. And let's say we publish it the first week of June, and we don't vote on it until the end of June. Is that fatal? Do we have to, do we have to republish and revote and go through all of that hassle? And I'm, I'm going back to this, you know, I don't know, what was it? The budget thing that, you know, our old friend came back at us on. And I don't want to get caught in that kind of trick bag again. The other question for Kevin is what do we publish in the newspaper? Do we publish the entire agreement verbatim? Do we adopt, do we publish it by reference and then just tell people that they can see it online or they can come into the clerk's office? I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that is. But let's say, for example, that we were to vote on this, the intent would be to bring this to the board on June 12th. What's our timeline for, for publication? Another question I have is, let's say we publish it, whether it's verbatim or by reference, and let's say the board makes changes at the meeting. You know, do I now, does that stop the clock and now I have to republish it all over again? I don't think so. I think as long as we're publishing our last, best, dry-run draft and make clear that it's a draft, then the board can make changes on the fly and, you know, and then present that to the city. I don't know who's going to vote on this first. I know we're both looking at, at sometime in June.
I would submit that you're correct, that the state law does not speak to a timeframe for publication. I would say that seven to 10 days would be reasonable for prior publication. Also, it does not speak to if the board does amend the articles, which would be different than what was published. That's not answered by the act either. So these are going to be issues of first, first impression.
Okay. Because you know what I'm worried about. I mean, I'm worried about somebody playing games with us and saying, oop, you know, you, you, you made, you changed the, the to an and, and, and that's not what was published in the newspaper, so everything is null and void and I'm, you have to start over again, or your Articles of Incorporation are going to be nullified by the courts or something like that. I've seen that happen before to somebody. You know, so I want to make sure that we, we do it right. Because I, I'm sure that there are people out there who are going to use the, the legal process to try to derail this.
My personal legal philosophy is to be as conservative as possible, to try to follow the letter of the law. The article does speak to amendments to the articles, and it says before, articles or amendments to the articles are adopted, the articles or amendments shall be published. That seems to contemplate amendments to existing articles, not amendments to proposed articles. But again, that's not made clear in the statute.
Okay. Anybody else on the board?
Just one more comment. Thursday night this week, Thursday night, we have another public forum for the public that want to come in and find out a whole lot more. That's an opportunity to do so. And we'll be there answering questions and telling you everything we know. So you're all welcome.
What time on Thursday?
Thursday at 7:00 at Park. There were mailings that went out to everybody. We sent invites to everybody in the city and the township. There will be a series of these throughout the summer and the like. This one is focused, instead of trying to do everything on every... We're really focusing on the, on the recreation aspects of the facility. In the past, we did a lot on the project. We did it on the arts. This is going to focus on the recreation activities. So that'll be the primary focus of the meeting.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on the, this particular item? Okay, thank you. Next up is supervisor and trustee comments. We do have a meeting next week. It's going to be a very busy schedule for us next week, so just be ready. We'll try not to make it three and a half hours, but it's, it will be a long one. So your appreciation, your cooperation is certainly appreciated. The good news is our next meeting after that will not be until June 12th. We had a pretty successful household hazardous waste day this past Saturday. It rained cats and dogs, but our turnout was remarkably good, about only about 100 fewer than, than last year. And plus, so we had the weather working against us and we were also encouraging residents to buddy up with neighbors to combine their, their delivery so that would save us money in the long run as well. So I think all things considered, I think that was still a pretty successful event. I, I hope that we can continue to provide that in the future. It is a good service. It's expensive, but I think it's something that our residents look forward to and take advantage of. I think that's it right now. Bob?
Yeah, I want to echo those comments about hazardous waste. I actually had, I was there as a resident and I happen to be one of the unfortunate few that was right at the front of the line when the lightning came in. But I, I felt really bad for the, the people that were there worked really hard and it was very, very appreciative. Another comment, I would like to remind the employees of the township that this board, every member of this board are their bosses. And I have an expectation that there are not disparaging comments made in public forums about anybody on this board, and I would appreciate if that reminder kind of went out.
Okay. Gary?
A quick add to...
Your thing on?
Add to hazardous waste, we did have 934 cars. Something we do have to consider is I had at least two cars that came in three times and four cars that came in at least twice.
Did you memorize the license plates?
Oh, no. Well, you know, when you're standing in line, you know, you talk to everybody, and I talk to everybody. Most of the people, I'd say 90% were very, very grateful that we do this. I hated to turn around, turn away some of the Northville and Canton and Plymouth City residents that got in line and waited, but, you know, oh, well. My other piece is thank you to the police department for looking into the selection of a Plymouth Township auto parts. After I went up and talked to them, they said you guys had already been there. They said they could pretty much save 20 to 30% off of every invoice that you guys brought in. And as far as I'm concerned, when you guys are looking for extra money, you've done your bit and you showed us that, you know, you're, you're part of the team and you're looking to save money. And we, and I appreciate that. That's it.
Gary?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, just wanted to inform the board that Plant Moran is on site here doing their testing for the audit. I think we were here last week, they're here this week. It should be pretty much wrapped up at the end of this week. I want to thank the treasures department and the accounting department for all their hard work in making that come off smoothly. And we, we're on target to, again, for the second year in a row, to have our audit done in a timely fashion.
Great. I do want to add one thing before I pass it over to Mark. I did meet this morning with Paul Albanese, who is the golf course consultant, and we had a terrific meeting. I'm really fascinated by a lot of his proposals and ideas. And so we will be presenting something to the board with respect to his scope of services in the very near future. Okay, Mark?
Nothing here. Jack?
Two quick things. One is last week I offered to prepare a report on soccer, and you have a two-page memo. Copies are available for the public from the deputy clerk. I won't go through it. I think it's something we can talk about at a future meeting. I do want to just highlight one thing, which is I learned a lot from this process. And we have an informal agreement. The, the Rain Soccer Club's interested in a formal agreement with us. And they're at a kind of a tipping point. So we have an opportunity to make soccer, help soccer grow here in the community, or we can watch it not grow. So look forward to talking about that, and I hope that's helpful to everybody's understanding. Now, the other thing really quickly...
On that subject, who runs the fields that, on Unisys property?
The city does that or manages the rec program. I'm not exactly sure who takes care of the fields.
So Unisys is loaning that out, apparently?
The city's using those.
I think that was a deal that went back many years when it was...
It did, when it was Visteon?
Yeah.
No, Unisys is not Visteon. We're talking about Unisys on Hagerty Road.
Oh.
Plymouth Road.
The boroughs.
It's relatively new.
Oh, that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Unisys?
Yeah, 10 years ago easily.
So the other thing is that when DTE, DTE was here, they mentioned they had filed an infrastructure plan. I asked for the information about the docket. I looked at their plan on my own hook, not on behalf of the township, not an official set of comments. I submitted some thoughts to the Michigan Public Service Commission last week. So we'll see if that is considered or not, but I did have some things to say.
On what topic again, Jack?
The DTE infrastructure, forward-looking plan on how to increase their reliability. It's a long story.
Jack, did you submit that as citizen Jack or trustee Jack? Would you, would I be able to get a copy of that just for reference? Because I may get a call.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to send those to you.
Okay. Okay.
They're a public document, and they were from my home address.
Okay. Chuck?
I'm going to pass out this editorial on economic development, so keep that in mind when you're doing economic development and not be too hyper-selective. Let the market run and not have taxpayers be subsidizing development. Let the private sector take some run. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the public on anything?
My name is Brad Durack. I live in Beacon Hill on Hillside Drive in Plymouth. Been here for over 25 years, and I just wanted to thank all of you for your hard work and the board and your open discussion. I think that you've come to some better conclusions as a result of that. But one of the things I wanted to quickly address is the need for empty nesters to move into smaller, lower-cost homes, because a lot of us live in, you know, in Plymouth Township area, and our houses are worth 400, 500, perhaps more, some less, but to go to these new condos that are being built for $600,000 plus doesn't make any sense. And basically, if I were to move today, I would be moving out of the Plymouth Township area in order to find a smaller, more affordable home that, you know, wouldn't require that. So again, that's...
Well, let me just respond to that. I usually wouldn't, but I can tell you that we have been approached by at least three different developers who are looking to build that kind of affordable housing for seniors, and they're looking at a couple sites in the township right now. I don't, very, very early stages. They're basically looking for properties, but I think that they are, that the market recognizes that there is a market for empty nesters throughout the financial spectrum.
Right, and to move from an empty nester from $400,000 to a house that's smaller, it costs significantly more, doesn't make any sense.
Exactly.
Particularly when you're on a budget, you're getting into, you know, your retirement pension areas. So thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Okay, motion is made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by clerk Vorva. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.